I'd like to call together the call to order the meeting of the zoning board. Okay, um, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. The first thing we'll do is roll call Stephen Antonio on here, Joanne Hogan.
Here.
Larry Boardman.
Here.
Josh Mickelson.
Present.
Mark Freeman.
Here.
And, um, Rob, obviously, we've met, uh, Amanda, uh, is Amanda, are you here from the public or am I?
Amanda's our clerk.
Not quite, so I'm sorry, Amanda. But your name looks so good in in print.
Oh, thank you.
Um, what about Dean Simmons? Is that a member of the public or?
Dean's my neighbor.
Oh, great. All right.
Laura support and his muscle if he needs it.
With that being said, eh, well, not with that being said, but with us establishing a quorum. I'd like to introduce the first agenda item, application twenty-two dash zero nine. Robert Montesi, owner applicant for variance pursuant to the Cinsbury zoning regulations, section three point five for the construction of an approximately two hundred and eighty-eight square foot chicken coop plus or minus twenty-nine feet within the side yard set box of the property located on one Wood Cliff Drive. So, Rob, the way this works is we need you to tell us why the exception should be granted. And it has to be a hardship, for instance, not to give you a hint. But the way your property is situated with the front yard setback being dual with two roads is. So do you want to introduce your project by chance?
Absolutely. Um, first of all, does everybody have, uh, with them a copy of the application that I submitted with the designs and so forth?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and because I could share my screen with the the plot plan if that helps, but, um, I don't know if if, uh, if, uh, if you find that helpful, but if you've already got it in print, I wouldn't be showing you anything different.
Right. We all received it in an email, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
That sound was off. We couldn't hear you.
It's a poltergeist or whatever you call him, no worries. Everyone's welcome. Do you want to present your plan and just give us a rough outline? And, um, what effort you've made to not need this, um, variance.
Sure. So our our property is, you know, it's pretty oddly shaped. I mean, um, you know, we've been, uh, in this house now for twenty, um, twenty-five years. Um, you know, moved into our our first home and loved our neighborhood and our neighbors and state and we're not going anywhere either. Um, but, you know, when we bought the property, we figured, wow, that's, you know, nice, big, beautiful lot. We had seen with the town two different measurements even, you know, one was like, you know, point nine, uh, eight acres and another one said, you know, one point five six acres and honestly, it looks like the larger of the two. But regardless, you know, great size lot, we figure, wow, you know, eventually we can, you know, do a garden or or shed or whatever we want to do. And, you know, we've been here all this this time and had started having kids in two thousand and three and um, anyway, hadn't put any accessory features on the property, hadn't expanded our house other than a little bump out, um, to the dining area, uh, that probably added eight square feet to the house. So, um, you know, we, um, have contemplated a shed at times and and then, you know, became much more aware of the setbacks and and they're they're pretty restrictive setbacks. Um, on just a a normal set of property, I understand, you know, the reasons for them, but with our property, we've got um, a a property that's kind of shaped, as you see on the on the plot plan, you know, kind of like a a half a pie with maybe somebody who's a little less than, uh, you know, generous, taking more than half of themselves, I guess, the way it's cut. And one thing that I just became aware from from Laura was not only did we have, you know, your normal front yard where you're not allowed to to put any structure, but that our property has two front yards and and, you know, that just kind of blew my mind, first of all. Um, and, you know, I guess it could almost be looked at as having three front yards, the way it curves around the east, north and west sides of our of our house. And, you know, we've got a pretty extensive, uh, backyard lot line. I just want to refer to those, um, those drawings myself without taking y'all off screen. But, um, it, you know, the front yard along the street is in excess of five hundred uh, feet and, uh, you know, it's like five hundred and twenty-five feet or so. And then along the back, we've got another, you know, three hundred and almost forty feet. Um, yet, if you were to obey the setbacks and conform to them, um, at the yellow highlighted area, you'd either have to put a structure on my driveway, right in front of my garage doors, or snugged up right against the back of the house and it would probably be about, uh, you know, a twenty square foot structure. So there's literally virtually nowhere to conform to the setbacks on our property. So I would consider that a pretty big hardship in terms of putting any accessory structures there. Um, so what we, you know, tried to look at is the best place to put it, uh, for aesthetics and function. And, you know, the 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 two front yards thing really, boy, you know, that threw us off because I always thought, well, you know, the the one place you'd want to put a shed, first of all, would would always be over toward the garage and driveway, you know, you know, your snow blower and so forth. That's just, that makes the most sense. Um, this obviously is not a shed. And so, you know, we've decided to fill our garage and where we used to make fun of our neighbors before we had kids and put our cars in the garage. Now we can't get our cars in the garage because it's filled with everything else. That's our giant shed now. But, um, with respect to the coop, we looked at, um, you know, immediately behind our house and that's, you know, where we've got our our little, it's an informal fire pit. We do hope to have something a little more, um, you know, formal. Um, before too long, uh, my my oldest son is an Eagle Scout, likes the informal look better, so we we let it happen for a little while longer. But also with respect to the the tree line, we've got a very treed lot, you know, perhaps the most treed lot in our neighborhood and we've we've kept it that way because we like it that way. Um, and, you know, so aesthetically, uh, where it is on that plan, we really felt very strongly that's the best place for it because, you know, not only is it pretty obstructed from the street, especially when there's more foliage, um, you know, our truth be told, our hemlocks are thinning out and and that's something we'd probably like to address to, you know, create more privacy again that we used to have there. But there's also on the west side a slope to that property. So, you know, pushing it back further was really the only logical choice to be able to to build on that slope without having one end be, you know, a lower roof. And then by the time you get to the other end of it, you'd have a a a very high roof. So, you know, we were challenged topographically. Um, uh, you know, as as well. And so we really couldn't think of a better place, uh, for for where it is. And after twenty-five years, we've been there long enough to think about where we could put things on the property.
So give us a brief overview, if you will, of what you're asking for. There's a chicken coop and then there's a run around it, if I understand correctly.
Yeah, that's correct. So, you know, when you normally think of chicken coops as as we did when we, when we've wanted chickens for a very long time. Um, you know, especially my wife and daughter, uh, they their animal husbandry skills are are amazing. Um, my daughter's been, as she says, getting chicken love, uh, from Flaming Farms since she was three years old. She's fourteen now. But we all, our entire family of five, we are big animal lovers and have always wanted to do this. So, you know, we've had some some personal things happen over the last few years that have have really, um, spurred us to finally do this. And I know, you know, you're supposed to keep this to, you know, the hardships and the technical reasons and there's, but there's nothing more personal than your family in your house, especially after you've been here so long. So hard to separate those things. But, um, with respect to having a coop, it's, eh, you know, um, we thought about this small coop, you know, right size for the for a flock. We're allowed to have up to twelve chickens and that's what we intend to do. Um, we currently do have, uh, ten that, you know, we'll hope to add to that are living in our garage. Uh, which is awesome. And they're growing very quickly. So, you know, we're, we created our own hardship of time as though the essence here. Um, but, you know, we thought about the small coop and then a cage, like cage type run on the end of that. And, you know, a few things came into to focus. The more we thought about more research, more started planning and designing. And aesthetically, um, you know, I'm not in love with that look, but it's kind of the norm, right? And then, you know, more conversations with my daughter, with friends who who have had chicken experiences and four friends over the last two years lose most of or all of their flocks to bears, um, raccoons. And in one case, it suspected, uh, fisher cat. And they're pretty horrible scenes. And if you're like us, you end up falling in love with your animals. Um, and, you know, I wanted to do anything I could to prevent that tragedy, first of all. So the thought of putting a roof on it started to become more important and certainly electrifying it. And in most of those cases, those people, I'm sorry, in all of those cases, they weren't, they didn't have an electric fence. So when you look at electrifying a run separately, you're still leaving the coop very vulnerable, especially to a bear. And so my daughter and my wife started really feeding me with pictures of violent deaths of chickens and the coops that were completely destroyed. And I found that really disturbing. But the other thing I found disturbing as well was, you know, my daughter's safety, she primarily, you know, everybody's going to be pitching in, but she's going out to the nesting boxes, which, uh, you know, you open up and, you know, there's nothing to protect her while she's there, but she's not the type to just go out. You know, clean, clean the coop a little bit, grab eggs and go. She's the type of person as we all are in this family, save maybe one who shall remain nameless. Uh, you know, we'll go out and spend hours with them and hang out there and make it a social scene. So we started to look at this differently as more of like a kind of a combination chicken coop, run, family gazebo. And to keep it safe and to make it more functional, to entirely surround the hen house with the run to make it a really integrated feature, but also to to make it. And again, if you've seen the designs, um, you know, try to be very thoughtful with respect to the aesthetic and make it look like a rustic country. Um, you you know, gazebo, you know, something you'd see at a at a ranch or a country camp. And have it be something that would be attractive and, um, enhance the property and certainly not in any way detract from it. Um, because I've seen lots of examples of that and they look hokey and like tree forts and uh, rickety and 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 there's no way I was going to do that to us looking at our backyard nor to my neighbors, uh, as well. We still want to enjoy our property to the fullest, but I also want to be respectful to my neighbors. Um, and, you know, I
It's a great segue, Rob, because the next thing we do is we invite the public um, for their input and any questions or concerns they might have. So, uh, Mr. Simmons, would you like to speak now by chance?
Sure, I do. I'll just, uh, echo what, you know, Rob has said. Yeah, uh, yes, obviously he's a neighbor across the street, but I think he's, um, he's been very thoughtful and being, uh, true to the aesthetics in the neighborhood. Um, it's tucked away. If you saw his property, uh, it's very shaded, a lot of trees on private, it's beautiful property. But it it complements it and, um, I don't think it stands out in any way that would seem, uh, obtrusive or, uh, unappealing. Uh, it is what it is. Um, and, uh, but he's he's done a nice job with with it to, uh, to make sure that, uh, it it fulfills what his family was looking to achieve by having that, but also, uh, it goes with the neighborhood. So, uh, I I'm just here to say that as a neighbor, uh, it it doesn't bother me and I think it, uh, I it will be something nice to have up in the neighborhood, especially with the kids and 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 for the little community that we have here on Wood Cliff Drive. Thank you.
Oh, phrase, thank you.
Mr. Simmons, could you just state your address for the record?
Uh, sure. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Yeah, twenty-two Wood Cliff Drive in Simsbury.
Okay, and I see one other person, uh, on the iPad. Is it a member of the public that would like to comment on this application by chance? Okay, hearing no response, you.
Well, that's, um, I'm Stacy Walzak. I was called as an alternate in the event that you needed me. Hi.
For joining us.
Of course.
Well, I've got you on the phone. I am so sorry to to take a a tangent to the meeting. Can I have your cell phone number so we can contact you if we need to?
Of course you may. It's eight six zero.
Yeah.
Eight one six four six two zero.
Well, thank you very much for being here.
Of course.
And, um, with with that, let's get right back to this application. Um, commit, uh, any of the commissioners, you got any questions for Mr. Montesi?
No, he's been very thorough and he and having the neighbors, uh, weighing in is very helpful. Did we hear anything from Matt Pierce, number six Wood Cliff? Did he, did you contact him about this?
Me? Yeah, Matt, Matt is actually, you know, besides being on the, uh, uh, a fireman in town now, Matt's a professional carpenter.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, I consulted Matt. Um, you know, we're we're good friends. You know, again, I I have so many good friends in this neighborhood. We we just, you know, we consider ourselves very lucky. You can't you can't buy that kind of thing.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's funny, he he sent me the card. Uh, he texted it to me. He said, how much is this worth? But just beers, beers, you know, um, but yeah, I absolutely, and I would never want to put words in somebody's mouth, but he said, quote unquote, he goes, you know, I'm jealous. I I I would like to be able to do something like that, uh, you know, for my kids. And, you know, and I got letters from, um, I would have, I I'm sure he would have provided a letter too. I just, I thought I only needed the two who immediately abutted me, uh, letters from them.
Yeah, we have those letters in our packet. So those, that's all set.
Yeah, and and so, you, yeah, it's just, again, I, you know, love my neighbors, want to just make sure that we have a a property that doesn't make anybody, you know, uh, scratch their head. I, you know, I park my utility trailer out there just for six months a year and then I I bring it over to my mom's and stick it in her garage just so it's
Okay, Rob, you're going off on the tangent.
I I know, I'm sorry.
Wait for another question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. Any other questions from any of the commissioners?
I don't think so. I I was just going to echo what Joanne said with all that support from the neighbors seems, um, pretty straightforward. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, there, I was looking at the letters. Um, he was very thorough. Uh, it's a, it's a cool looking design, by the way. Looks like, uh, looks, looks pretty interesting. But, um, but yeah, with the with the uniqueness of the property and and the neighbor support, I I don't really have any further questions.
All right. Any other commissioners with comments prior to closing the application? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to close the application. Um, from there, we'll have to deliberate, Rob, just so you know, but from this point on, you can't talk. So, um, we're going to talk about you, not to you. So I've made a motion. I see Joanne seconding that motion. Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
It's pretty much unanimous unless someone would like to vote no or abstain, just to make sure. All right, with that, the motion is, uh, the is closed. I'm so sorry.
Sharon's got something.
Sharon, go ahead. Talk.
Yep, I am. I just wanted to unmute, so I'm abstaining.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And let the record show that Sharon Thomas has abstained. Um, okay, so let's deliberate. Um, does someone else want to start or I'll start? There's obviously the, if you did look at that highlight area, he's got a a very small area that he could be in compliance and it is his driveway is by far and away the vast majority of it. Um, we've run into this rather often. It seems, you know, a genuine hardship that falls on a a vast amount of properties, unfortunately, where they have dual front yards.
Yeah, his is, this is even almost more problematic being
Three sides.
Three sides. I don't even know what you do with that. So three front yards and a very small piece that's really behind the house, hidden by the house. So, um, and the the truth of it is that what it looks to be like where he's wants to put this is about as far from that number six side of the circle as he can get it. Um, without taking up that small piece of his backyard that is probably the most private part where they hang out. So, um, I think that he's been thoughtful in this process, certainly, and um, and he is saddled with a beautiful but oddly shaped piece of property.
And we also, you know, I I feel we need to give the credibility to the neighbors all weighing in. You know, one of the things we have to look for is that doesn't create a hardship for another neighbor.
Yes.
And it almost seems like it'll be an asset to the neighborhood feeling.
Yep.
Have this house with some not.
As an owner of an odd shaped property, I fully understand what he's telling.
Well, and I think he has, um, been thoughtful in his process and making this a safe haven for the birds because, um, honestly, the the bears, though we love them, are they they're pretty, they're pretty large and in charge around here. And so it it doing his due diligence and keeping the animals safe inside the run. It's big, but it's not big compared with the piece of property he's putting it on. It's, you know, his property is large enough, I think, to handle it.
Especially if he goes up to the twelve that he has, uh, stated.
And he's, and his neighbors to the back, the Deb and Walt have obviously been are supportive of it and it's pretty close to their property line. So, um, if they're okay with it, I feel like that's a a plus for us.
Anyone else that would like to, uh, participate in the discussion as to this motion?
Yeah, I think just echoing what you guys have said, the, uh, also the aesthetics of the of the build, you know, just seem seem like it would be a welcome addition. Uh, he's got the neighbor's support. I feel like we run into a lot of these lots in this commission. Seeing, uh, seeing multiple front yards and things like that. And like Joanne said, it's, it seems like that's really the only place that, you know, makes makes sense. So, um, yeah, I mean, not much to add, just kind of echoing what you guys are saying and and all the neighbor support. So, yeah, I mean, that's that's kind of all I have.
Okay, um, does anyone have any limitations they think we should bring up as to this variance before we vote on it? I'm not saying there are any. I'm crossing Ts and dotting Is. I I don't see any myself to be able to. Okay, with that being said, um, Joanne, you usually make the motion. So do you have?
I can make the motion. I would like to, I would like to make a motion to approve application number twenty-two dash oh nine, Robert Montesi, owner applicant for areas pursuant to the sensory zoning regulations, sections three point five for the construction of an approximately two hundred and eighty-eight square foot chicken coop plus or minus twenty-five, twenty-nine feet within the side yard setback of the property located at one Wood Cliff Drive. Assessors map D seventeen, block six oh two, lot zero one four, zoned R forty, with the hardship being this property is an oddly shaped piece of property with two, you could even consider it three, uh, front yard setback, side yard setbacks that are front yard setbacks. He really doesn't have a backyard in which to place this building.
And the approval is subject to administrative zoning permit to be obtained, Joanne?
Where is that? I don't have that.
The the approval is subject to the following condition, an administrative zoning permit is to be obtained.
Okay, I didn't have that. Okay.
And is that good, Laura? Does she have to say? I can change my voice. An administrat- Okay, with that being said, I'll keep things moving along. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Abstained. Sharon is abstaining. That's one extension and there's no one left to vote against it. Congratulations, Rob. We wish you the best of luck and and look forward to chicken specials at the restaurant.
We'll come over for eggs.
Come on, come on over and enjoy them anytime. We have a bunch of different breeds and they're actually sweet. So that's, it's been part of my education that they're they're actually sweet. They like people once they've imprinted on you. So.
Yeah.
That's cool. Well, thanks again for your time. You can check out, we've got to do a little bit more of the meeting, but thank you very much for and Mr. Simmons, thank you for attending as well.
Thank you, everybody. Be well.
Thank you.
Bye.
Um, on general commission business, I don't know if everyone, Laura, there was like a letter from George about some affordable housing or something. I I gotta be frank, I never read it. Was it everyone on the commission that got it or?
All the boards and commissions did get it. It's a seminar that he is, uh, doing, I believe it's on November ninth. And this was just an invitation in case you wanted to attend. I believe it's being held at the library. I don't have the invitation up. I don't want to give you the bad, wrong information on it. But it was just to let everybody know it's it's based off of affordable housing and accessibility.
Okay, we don't do that much with that, do we? Okay, just making sure. So it's understood. Well, that's general commission business. We have that on November ninth, if you'd like to attend it.
What what time is it on November ninth?
Laura?
What time on November ninth?
I want to say six o'clock, but I'd be happy to forward the invitation to you tomorrow, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Oh, um, okay, with that, let's move to the approval of minutes, the August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting. Do anyone have any questions or comments regarding that meeting?
I read it. It looked okay to me.
Say likewise, non eventful, because Amanda Blaze does a great job with our minutes.
Thank you. Good shows there. I appreciate it.
Who would like to make a motion to approve that? Spread the love around. Anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Sharon. And Larry seconds it. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Should have probably done, it's unanimous, probably should have done these at the same time. However, the October nineteenth meeting that just happened last week, did everyone have it?
Real quick, I'm abstaining on the August one.
Because you weren't there. Good point. I'm so sorry to rush it. Um, how about October nineteenth? Any questions or comments on that meeting?
That one looked okay to me, too.
I'll abstain for that. I'm I'm not there.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes from October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Thank you, and I'll second that. Uh, all those in favor of approving those minutes? Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
One abstention? All right. Uh, so that that moves. Is there anything else you guys want to talk about before we adjourn or make a motion to adjourn?
I just want to say something about the fact that we didn't have a good showing at that meeting that one night. Um, I just want to reiterate that it's
Which one night?
The meeting that
The one this guy had to come back like over a month.
The one that was supposed to happen, the what night was that? The
I can't remember. We did that.
Was supposed to happen October.
No, it was September.
September. And then we recalled it for October nineteenth as a special meeting because we didn't have a quorum. So
Well, that was me, that was the last meeting that we had last week, right?
Oh, uh,
October nineteenth.
No, October nineteenth was called specially because we didn't have a quorum, but we didn't know we weren't going to have a quorum for the September meeting. So my point is, if you can't make it to the meeting, it's very important that you let them know you can't make it to a meeting. We have to know before Wednesday night of a meeting that there's no quorum. So we can let these applicants know that there's no meeting. So if you can't make it to a meeting, you have to communicate that clearly in an email.
Yeah, and respond. Is everyone getting Joe Hollis's invitations?
Yes.
Okay, so Josh, you're still not getting them?
No.
Okay, there's something wrong with somewhere in there because you've got to be able to respond to those invitations. So how are you getting on the meeting then?
I'm just looking it up every day.
We got to fix that fast.
Same with me. I just go on to the website and
You guys don't get the emails from Josh?
No.
Okay, so Laura, can we figure this out before next week, before next meeting?
Absolutely. Can you both just email me whatever email address you want to use? I'm L Bartowski at Simsberry dash C T dot gov. Because I want to check, make sure it's coming in based off of our server if there's something not blocking it. But if you want to
And also that you guys check your own computers and make sure there's nothing at your, that's not going to spam.
Because I see ROM on the dishrobe.
Yeah, but it's two Simsberry dash C T dot gov email.
That gov, right.
It needs to go to their personal email.
It needs to go to their personal.
Right, you got to give Laura your personal emails. And then you guys check your own and make sure things aren't going to spam. And then you guys check your own and make sure things aren't going to spam for some reason. I had that happening at work with a union emails. We're going to spam for some reason. And I had to fix it on my computer. So um. Because.
And the same thing for Josh. Josh is just going to C T dot gov as well.
Yeah, those aren't the right emails. You gotta use your personal. And so. And then when you get the email from Josh Hollis. You guys have, you guys should, everybody, all of us should respond immediately whether we're going or not. So he has a list of who's going. And then we will know if there's a quorum. And if there's not a quorum, it's not your fault. If you can't make it, that's okay. We just need to know. And then if there's not a quorum, the poor applicant doesn't show up for no reason and pay money and all that.
Oh, yeah, the builder with him and an architect with him too.
Yeah, really, just. So we just have to do our diligence from from our end and make sure Josh knows. Exactly who can and cannot make it to the meeting.
Joe Hollis, right. So Joanne, you just. You just mentioned that. That we don't want the applicant to show up and pay money. What money are they paying?
That to the architect and the builder, those people are professionals and if. They have to go to more than one meeting and additional expenses incurred.
Right. When they're paying, you know, they might be paying professionals to come with them. And we just don't want them to show up for a meeting that's not going to happen. It just doesn't.
I'm okay with that, but you just mentioned, I was like, the last few people.
He showed up with team support and. We weren't there for him. So it was. Uh, you know, mis- miscommunications. We just need to make sure it doesn't happen anymore.
I was gonna offer too, this is Stacy. I can, I can begin to sit on our meetings. Um, or you can. Obviously add me to the distribution list, just so I have awareness over what's happening and going on.
You should be on the distribution list, are you not?
I don't check my Sims very well commonly. So, yeah, I just, I'll email you, Laura, and give you my personal. Yeah. And I could be on within like an hour's notice. It's not a problem.
And she's not even on with the Simsberry dash C T dot gov address. So she's not even being. Unless it's a great smile at Gmail. Or.
Oh, no, that's Sharon's.
No, that's not me.
That's a good one, Sharon. I like that. You do have a great smile, by the way.
You know, Mark, do you mind if I ask you your cell phone number? Yours is the only one I don't have.
Yeah, eight six oh. Six two two. Eight zero four six.
Okay, that's going to be a huge help to the ability to text everyone, honestly, prior to that meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
Few cell numbers, but um.
I love a text. I love a text.
You can always, well, we we have to do everything on screen during a live meeting, but that is a form of communication. Between us that can.
Just a confirmation, yeah.
Does everyone, wh- i- if it's okay with everyone, I'll share all our cell phone numbers in an email to all of us.
That's not a bad idea.
And that way we have a calling list and um, you know, if there's a question, a comment, or just a general, hey, are you going? Especially if we ever.
I like that, Steve.
I do too. Probably everyone on the screen has more than one email that they're required to check every day. It's hard. Between work and personal and maybe other committees you're on. So um. I I do think that the texting might be really helpful, like a check in in the beginning of the week or something.
Yeah, I I'll do that as well then, like the day before, hey, just remember.
Yeah, because we're kind of liking these Zoom meetings, but. Um, I think the Zoom. The the platform is, it's, we're a little disconnected from each other and from the process. And so the more we can communicate, the better. So thank you, Stephen, for coming up with that idea.
Okay. All right, with that being said, is there anything else that anyone would like to bring up in regards to the CBA?
So our next meeting is, I know we had two back to back, but our next meeting is. Yes.
Day before Thanksgiving.
Giving.
Yeah.
Maybe we won't. Sometimes we don't have any applications. Does it look like we're gonna have one? I don't have one just yet. Um, I, they have had people asking me about them, but they have till the first Friday of November to submit. Otherwise they go to the next month. So feel free to check in with me that Monday. I would be happy to let you know if we have an application. Um, also, everyone should have gotten contact information either emailed or snail mailed. To an updated contact form. I believe Joanne, yours was uh emailed and I already got it. So you already filled yours out. You're good.
I did too.
You did too, Stephen. I've been asked it as well. But in case, you know, we were having a hard time getting ahold of people, so we did try snail mailing it. As well to get updated email addresses. So keep your eyes peeled for that in the mail too, in case you might have. You know, gotten lost.
Yeah, I either got one in in the mail or an email and I and I replied, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I saw yours too, Mark.
I don't believe I got one.
So would it be helpful, Laura, for people to put their email in here or no?
And where?
In the chat.
Um, well, we should all be, once, once. Josh and Rom's get updated, everybody should be on Joe Hollis's communication.
Well, I thought Larry just said that he didn't.
I I didn't get the the snail mail. Or I get emails, no problem.
If you got the email, then you might not have gotten snail mail. There was just those who we didn't get a response to via email.
Stacy, did you get that form? Do you know what we're talking about?
I am not aware of it, no.
Okay, so Laura, can you take care of that?
Absolutely.
I also have some laundry at Best Cleaners. Don't assume.
You can walk right over to the dry cleaners and get your stuff from your restaurant.
Well, I don't know.
Um, okay, on that note, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Unless there's anything else. Thank you, Joanne. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time and efforts. Have a great night.
Have a good night.